Forty-one will now come to order. May we please have the playing of the National Anthem? Councilmember Bangston, would you please send us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council is grateful to have Pastor Amy Asby of the Short North Church back at council. Thank you so much Pastor for coming back and praying with us.
If you please pray with me. God of us all and not just some, thank you for the gift of this day, one that has not been before and one that will not be again. So help us to steward it well. As we prepare for the long work before us, we pause and bring the most vulnerable to the center of our hearts and of our minds. Those who go to sleep hungry, those searching for housing, those who are afraid to authentically exist, those struggling with addictions, and those who bear the burden of unjust systems. Those who have no luxury of thinking about tomorrow because they really have no idea how they're going to survive today. Keep our eyes open to how our decisions can protect dignity, lessen burdens, and build a more equitable future. Help us to create a culture of peace in a violence-weary world. In the name of all that is holy, amen.
Oh man, thank you so much Pastor. Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Bangston, Barrosa, De Padilla, De Akauer, Doran, Sfavor, Green, Reamy, White, President Harden. Any person who takes any action to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to suspend for the reading of the Journal? Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa, De Padilla, De Akauer, Doran, Sfavor, Green, Reamy, White, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the Journal? Hearing none, the Journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go around the dials for any updates or resolutions by council members. Councilmember Bangston. Councilmember Barrosa, De Padilla.
Thanks Council President, I have one announcement and it is an invitation for folks to join us this Thursday at West High School at 6:00 PM. Councilmember Green and I will be hosting first in a series of town halls around Link Us, our proposed bus rapid transportation system in the city of Columbus. Folks will have an opportunity to meet all of the partners who are involved with Link Us, learn more about the effort, and learn more about what bus rapid transit, not just the bus, but all of the other pieces of transportation, infrastructure like sidewalks and trails and bikeways that Link Us will bring. So I hope that folks can join us. Again, that's at 6:00 PM at West High School this Thursday. We will have many more opportunities for folks to engage. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember De Akauer.
Thank you Council President. I just want to give a shout out to our amazing Columbus Recreation and Parks Department for another fantastic Jazz and Rib Fest.
Yeah.
And that's all I have.
That's awesome. I heard a lot of great things about the Jazz and Rib Fest as well. So thank you, thank you. Press for Tim.
Thank you Council President. I want to make a quick announcement, and I know we have a number of speakers on first read tonight about this, but excited to announce that the final zoning legislation had been submitted to council. Folks may have been able to tune into the press conference earlier today with the mayor and the council president myself outlining the six ordinances that appear on tonight's agenda for first reading. That legislation contains numerous changes made to the original proposal that's based off of over 1,500 visits to our zoning gallery, visits to our area commission civic associations, three public hearings that this body held, and over 18 formal comments submitted by members of the public. These updates will also be subject of a fourth zoning public hearing here in council chambers this Wednesday at July 24th at 5:30. There'll be an excellent opportunity for residents to be able to better understand about what those amendments to this proposal do. This council will allow that final legislation, will allow time for folks to review that final legislation before it becomes for a final vote, before council plan for our next council meeting on July 29th right here in council chambers at 5:00. So as always, just updating folks on where we're at with that vital piece of legislation. Thank you.
Thank you Press for Tim. Councilmember Sfavor.
Thank you Council President Harden, just one brief announcement. On Wednesday, July 31st, my office will be hosting the Third Annual Housing for All Forum from 4:00 to 8:00 PM at Columbus State Community College. To learn more and to register, please visit housingforallcbus.com. Thank you.
Thank you Councilmember. Councilmember Green. Councilmember Reamy. Councilmember White.
Thank you Council President. Just a quick comment. Last week, we announced that we were going to be holding our first food rescue during Jazz and Rib Festival. I'm excited to report that last night we diverted around 780 pounds of food from going to our landfills. The rescued food items were taken to over 10 receiving agencies across Columbus, including Van Buren Center, the Veteran Shelter, the Open Shelter, Star House, and the South Point Apartments, to name a few. I want to thank all the department staff, food rescue, and all the vendors who donated to make this possible. We learned a lot about this rescue, we learned a lot from this rescue and hope to do this for other events in the future. So just want to make that announcement.
I absolutely love it. That's awesome. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I want to first acknowledge that tonight's meeting may be a little clunky. The city is working through some technical issues. Definitely want to thank the city staff and council staff who have been rolling with the punches to keep the city's business going. We will hold a full normal meeting today and next week in our planned final meeting before break. Our live stream is up on Spectrum and Breeze Line, but may not be on YouTube and Facebook, but we'll upload it after the meeting to have a full record. Are there any other comments by elected officials, offices represented? Hearing none, are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of third-day legislation by the city clerk. Clerk please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa, De Padilla, De Akauer, Doran, Sfavor, Green, Reamy, White, President Harden.
Thank you. The clerk now reading to the record the orders number of third-day legislation on tonight's agenda.
In Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinances 1655, 1892, 1984, 2042, 2050, 2078, and 2097-2024. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business, ordinances 2048, 2067, 2077, and 2099-2024. Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have ordinances 2137 and 2188-2024. Neighborhoods, Recreation and Parks Committee, Resolution 185X, ordinances 1861, 1915, and 2013-2024. Workforce Education and Labor Committee, ordinances 2044, 2045, 2046, and 2047-2024. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, ordinance 2231, 1307, 1638, 1718, 1809, 1833, 1878, 1896, 2033, 2035, 2040, 2041, 2056, 2057, 2061, and 2066-2024. Rules and Policy Committee, ordinances 2110, 2111, 2112, 2113, 2114, 2115, 2210, and 2207-2024. Zoning Committee, we have 2122, 2127, 2132, 2123, 2133, 2165, 2167, 2168, 2169-2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have several speakers on the first reading portion of our agenda. As many folks know, we have the first reading of some really exciting legislation and amendments from, for our zoning process. Again, thanks, thank our President Pro Tim for leading this process. And as he said, we still have some listening to do, so we'll do some tonight, but we'll also have a public hearing this Wednesday that will go in depth about the amendments that we've brought forward based off the community engagement that we've had so far. So the first speaker to come before council is Monica Tellez Fowler of Coda, speaking on ordinance 2112-2024. Madam President, welcome to council.
President Harden and members of the council. My name is Monica Tellez Fowler and I serve as President and CEO of the Central Ohio Transportation Authority, known commonly as Coda. Our organization serves 562 square miles with a population of 1.2 million people. We provided 12 million riders last year with a proud and professional workforce who keep the region linked to their job, their home, doctor's appointments, educational opportunities, and many of our vast cultural and recreational destinations. I am incredibly excited to lead an outstanding community service organization during a historic and transformative time in our fast-growing city and region. I know firsthand how public transportation investments and efforts to promote development can positively impact and right the unintentional wrongs of decades-old policies. In fact, my own personal story is one such outcome. The council is, this council is considering a critical zoning reform that will enhance development, and every resident of Columbus will consider a public transit investment in this November through Link Us, our Region's Growth and Mobility Initiative. Coda is asking those who live in our service area to consider a halfpenny sales tax increase to build modern rapid transit, increase service by 45%, add 500 miles of sidewalks and bikeways, and make transit easily accessible by connecting faster, more frequent transit to housing, made possible by the modernized zoning code under consideration now. I have seen how cities can benefit and even flourish with well-thought-out, densely-developed, vibrant neighborhoods where people can walk, bike, and use transit to get nearly anywhere. This type of development referred to as equitable transit-oriented development ensures that transit and transit users are considered as part of development and not an afterthought. This is important as 96% of Coda riders walk to their transit stop to use Coda's system. The city of Columbus and Coda have worked closely for years toward ensuring the ETOD plans for Link Us are supported by the modernization of the city's zoning code. These two initiatives work hand-in-hand, and that's why I'm here today to voice my support for this legislation. The dichotomy is clear. Dense development along planned mobility corridors generates more transit users, including those looking to leave their cars for more sustainable and/or healthier transportation modes like mass transit, walking, biking, and other modes. And the transit Coda plans to provide with a yes vote from this community this year will support the dense development and walkable and more equitable communities the Zone-In Initiative will create. Thank you Council President Harden and members of the council for the opportunity to share my support for this critical zoning reform. In addition, thank you for all your leadership and support for Coda and our excellent team. And thank you, the city and together, the city and Coda will help undo historical inequities and put our city on the pathway to better mobility and housing, more housing, and greater affordability. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. I have just one question, Monica. One of the reasons I'm so excited about your leadership right now in this historic moment in our city with Link Us and the zoning is that you've come from other cities that have grown and gone through processes of growth. Could you tell me how those cities plan for the type of growth that we're seeing and how you see that these two big initiatives that the city of Columbus is underway with right now, how do you see that having a positive impact on our community?
Yep, I certainly do. I have seen efforts where, if combined and well-thought-out, I've been fortunate enough to be a part of some projects that included some ETOD, and a lot of that required the zoning changes that you're making today, but it allowed us to build mixed-use buildings that included some retail in the bottom, some childcare, as well as some mixed income-level housing for people. Those connected directly to the rail line, there's essentially no walk, but the communities that surrounded this rail line that we built out in Texas in particular really kind of expanded. And if you were to visit it now, you wouldn't even recognize it. People there, I mean, don't see the parking lots, you don't see a lot of the traffic there because people just are enjoying, they're out enjoying walking or biking in those communities. And if they're really moving away from there, they're taking the public transit. I have seen really how, I've had individuals come up to me after a project a year later, and they come back and they say, "Thank you so much because the project that you guys worked on, that you put out here today, allowed me and my family to say, 'We can be a one-car family now,' or 'We can move away from a car.'" And that, those dollars that they were able to save from not having to have a car was, allowed them to do different things with their children. Whether that's summer camp, whether that's school, whatever the choice is, it allows parents or families to make those decisions, financial decisions, that sometimes are difficult to make.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you Chair. Hi Monica, thank you for joining us this evening. I do want to put a fine point on a little bit of what you were talking about, Council President, and I think you can't talk about housing without talking about transportation, right? These two things go hand-in-hand. And we, I think also, as we've been talking about this, we talk a lot about like infrastructure, just means sidewalks, right? Like it's confusing for folks. So when we talk about EOTD, or equitable transit-oriented development, can you just talk a little bit more about what actually does that mean and really what is the benefit of that? As we think about, can you put the through line between our efforts with Zone-In and as we think about Link Us and how the two are connected and how it will affect the community?
Yeah, transportation really has an impact on what you can afford in terms of housing. And the two certainly have an impact on what choices you make in terms of how you make a living. You know, where can I reach a place of employment? Can I be reliable? Can I, can I prosper where I'm at? Those two things really have a huge impact on people. As people sprawl out, you know, jobs may be easier for somebody to drive into or out of. Not everyone has that option. And certainly, when you think about someone who is trying to raise a family, maybe, someone who is trying to go to school and really access different pieces, you know, if you don't live in that neighborhood, it maybe becomes a little more than just challenging. It is no longer accessible to you. So the equity in both, that transportation and the housing really have an impact on people. If we create a system where housing is built out, only those individuals who can afford cars and can, are going to be able to access jobs or other things, even just healthcare and just a good way of life.
Well, and I think that the idea also that, you know, with Zone-In, we have taken this first phase that overlays these lines that are connected to Link Us, I think helps to drive our density to these areas, which then spurs that development, not just new development, but really sustaining what is already there. So those small businesses, other things that are, that are characteristic of the neighborhoods where these lines will run through. And so, you know, thank you for being here tonight, thank you for testifying, I think also giving us a perspective of other cities that have grown, other cities that have been faced with this growth, that they are facing both transportation and housing challenges. I think that experience and bringing that to our city at this critical time is crucial for us. So thank you for, again, for being here tonight, and thank you for all the work that you've been doing to really, to quite literally move the city into this next decade of growth and prosperity. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker to come before council is Mr. Michael Wilkos of United Way. Welcome back to council. Speaking on ordinance 2112-2024.
Good evening Council, President Harden, Chair Dorans, members of council. My name is Michael Wilkos and I am here this evening to support Zone-In. In 1985, when I was in high school, I took an ad out in my high school newspaper advertising Columbus because I thought it was a city with a future, and living in northeast Ohio, I was convinced the steel mills of Youngstown were not going to come back. I wanted to be part of a city whose better days were still ahead of itself. Thirty-nine years later, it is clear that progress is everywhere in our city, except our current zoning code is holding us back. Zone-In is one of the most significant policy decisions in decades that will continue our city's forward trajectory. In my professional role at United Way, I lead our grant-making into more than 75 nonprofit organizations who work every day to support children and families who struggle to meet their monthly basic needs. I'm also the chair of the Continuum of Care, our community's unified funding system to combat homelessness, as well as serve on the board of the Affordable Housing Alliance and the Central Ohio Stable Housing Network. I work every day to serve the nearly 300,000 people who live in our city who struggle to meet those basic needs. And the number one issue they face is affordable housing. We must zone in more housing. I'm a huge supporter of this effort because it expands both the number of housing units as well as the diversity of unit typology for a rapidly changing city. Housing costs have escalated considerably over the past decades, and there will never be enough nonprofit and government resources to meet the needs if the overall housing market does not produce more housing. I think the updated zoning code will help solve this problem. The current zoning code does not support housing that aligns with who we have become as a city. Our city is much more diverse than the housing options people now must choose from. As our region continues to handle considerable population growth, the city needs to be ready to build more housing, improve transit and walkability, and strengthen commercial corridors. Zone-In will allow the city to capture a larger portion of regional growth and not be left behind as growth continues to move to the periphery. If we do not change the way we grow and where we grow, Columbus will lose. If we do not change the way we grow, hundreds of square miles of farmland and some of the most productive farmland in the world will be lost to car-dependent sprawl on the region's edges. Sprawl on the periphery traps people of color in disinvested communities disconnected from where opportunity is moving. Zone-In is a significant effort to course correct this. While the work of Zone-In has been going on in a steadfast way for years, now is the time to codify and move forward. One of the biggest mistakes is that we did not approve Zone-In 39 years ago when I did that piece in my high school newspaper. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wilkos. The next speaker to come before council is Monica Tuttle, speaking on ordinance 2112-2024. Monica, welcome to council.
Good evening council. It's great to see all of you. I would like to say that I am speaking against the current language of Zone-In, but I am absolutely a proponent of the Zone-In project itself. I think that there have been some great additions and modifications based on public feedback that have occurred in the last couple of weeks. However, I don't think that we have spent enough time on those revamps to take advantage of this pivotal moment in this time. We have the opportunity to really embrace a number of neighborhoods across Columbus, and I think that the proposal as presented leaves a bunch of us behind. I'm a resident of the northwest civic area. I live north of Henderson, south of 161, and between the Sciota and Olentangie rivers. We are only seeing CAC and RAC projects in our area. These are large parcels. There are a lot of specifics that are not addressed in this Zone-In proposal that will have a detrimental effect on my part of town. I have to say, this is not just about me, though. I'm sure that I am not the only one who has looked into this and has saw a number of things lacking. I think that there is an opportunity to go with this first draft, to go with this second draft, and to really dig into some of the details and incorporate more green space, more trees. Think about the setbacks and how they will be utilized in these different areas, and think about, these are mixed-use districts. We all talk about moving to a more transit and walkable, user-friendly environment. However, we are allowing by right certain uses in these mixed-use districts that are not currently permitted. This includes car washes. Many of these parcels right now are not allowed to have car washes on them, and yet, once these are rezoned, these will be allowed to be car washes by right. And these are not small individual parcels. Many of these are many, many acres in size. That very much undermines the usability of that parcel for adjacent housing. Please use this opportunity to bring housing not just to the urban areas, not just to the areas surrounding those urban areas, but to the suburbs as well. We consider ourselves to be pretty urban up in the northwest part of Columbus, and yet we see time and time again, city council looks at us as auto-dependent. We are not, and we do not want to be. Please do not force that upon us. I respectfully request that you table this so that additional modifications can be made. Otherwise, I would ask that you oppose it as it's presented. Thank you.
Thank you so much Monica for your feedback this afternoon. I would entertain if a council member wanted to, but we will have more discussion next week when it's actually on the agenda. But I do see that you're also speaking on ordinance 2113. Would you like to do that now? Or was that?
It was, it was sort of altogether. I would really urge everyone to really give some thought into, is, if this is really important, it's worth taking another week or two? And if it's not important, then what does another week or two harm us? So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tuttle. The last speaker to come before council on the first readings is Christopher Epperson, speaking on ordinance 2112-2024. Welcome to council.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Christopher Epperson. I am a resident of Wyland Park, a member of Strong Towns, Columbus, and I'm here to express my support for the proposed ordinances which implements Phase 1 of Zone-In Columbus. The public realm is a direct reflection of a society's values, and zoning codes are one of the most significant ways in which we shape our public realm. In the 1950s, the city of Columbus, alongside almost every other city in the United States, embarked on a development pattern which had never been tested before. This development pattern, which Strong Towns refers to as the suburban experiment, eliminated housing choice, prioritized cars over people, and directly contributed to the housing crisis we are experiencing today. Through the proposed changes to our outdated zoning code, the city of Columbus is taking the first step towards building a more resilient city. The proposed districts in Phase 1 of Zone-In is the beginning of restoring housing choice to the future and current residents of Columbus. By permitting, not requiring, mixed-use development and allowing our neighborhoods to accommodate all housing types, residents will have the opportunity to choose for themselves how they want to live. In eliminating minimum parking requirements, we as the people of Columbus are asserting this, that the city of Columbus prioritizes the needs of people searching for housing over the desire to find a convenient parking spot. My wife and I rent an apartment that was built in the 1920s in Wyland Park. In total, there are 24 units. Our apartment provides housing for young families like us, to retirees who opted to not live in a single-family home. With our current zoning code, the types of housing we want to live in are illegal to build. By once again allowing the traditional development patterns that made our most desirable neighborhoods, the city of Columbus gives my family and future generations the ability to stay in the city we love. I hope that we don't wait another 70 years to revise our zoning code, however. Although almost anything is better than the zoning code we have right now, we will undoubtedly encounter parts of our zoning code which need to be updated. One example right now is the parking impact studies which are required by the current proposal. Although it's too early to tell, I suspect the parking impact study requirement will create a financial burden that will hurt our local small-scale developers who cannot absorb the costs of a study like a larger developer can. I hope the city closely monitors the effects of this new requirement and other parts of the zoning code to revise the zoning code as needed in future Zone-In phases. the zoning code to revise the zoning code as needed in future Zone In phases. I would like to extend my sincere gratitude to the members of City Council for their commitment to engaging with the community and to reforming our zoning code. Through continued dialogue and collaboration, we can ensure that our city's development is both equitable and sustainable. I ask that the City Council vote yes to Zone In Columbus. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Epperson. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you so much for providing testimony this afternoon. Are there any final question or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, the following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolutions of Expression, one ninety-seven X and two hundred X dash twenty twenty-four, Finance and Governance Committee, ordinances sixteen eighty-four, seventeen thirty-two, eighteen fifty-nine, eighteen seventy-one, eighteen ninety-seven, nineteen oh four, nineteen fifty-eight, nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty-one, nineteen ninety-eight, and twenty twenty-two, twenty-one ninety-two dash twenty twenty-four, Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee, ordinance seventeen twenty-six, eighteen seventy, eighteen ninety-four, and nineteen oh one dash twenty twenty-four, Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolution one eighty-two X, ordinances eighteen sixty-three, nineteen hundred, twenty seventeen, and twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-four, Neighborhood, Recreation, and Parks Committee, ordinances fifteen eighty-seven, sixteen seventy-nine, nineteen twelve, nineteen thirteen, nineteen fourteen, nineteen twenty, nineteen twenty-one, nineteen ninety-four, twenty eleven, twenty fourteen, twenty sixteen, twenty nineteen, twenty-one eighty, and twenty-one ninety-one dash twenty twenty-four, Workforce, Education, and Labor Committees, ordinance seventeen oh three, and twenty thirty-six dash twenty twenty-four, Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, ordinances eighteen oh one, eighteen oh three, eighteen eighty-two, nineteen twenty-six, nineteen forty-five, and twenty-one twenty dash twenty twenty-four, Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, ordinances seventeen fifty-eight, eighteen thirty-nine, eighteen forty-one, eighteen forty-four, eighteen eighty-one, eighteen eighty-three, and eighteen eighty-eight dash twenty twenty-four, Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, ordinances fifteen thirty-eight, eighteen twenty-two, nineteen thirty-four, nineteen fifty-three, and twenty ninety-five dash twenty twenty-four, Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee, Resolution one ninety-two X, ordinances twelve fifty-six, thirteen eighty-four, sixteen thirteen, sixteen ninety-nine, seventeen fifteen, seventeen eighty-five, eighteen oh two, eighteen fifty-one, eighteen sixty-seven, eighteen seventy-three, nineteen twenty-three, nineteen fifty-five, nineteen sixty-six, nineteen seventy-six, nineteen seventy-nine, twenty-six, and twenty twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-four, Rules and Policy Committee, we have appointments from the mayor, A one fifty-five dash twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent portion of the agenda, Mr. Nate Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to counsel.
Sixteen twelve, Arlington Avenue, Mr. Los Angeles, Wilkins. I would be speaking for this, and only reason why, CA forty-three, nineteen twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four. It seems like the Columbus School Board, I do believe, but again, it's some thoughts and some ideas here. I would love to see this more money to be analyzed for more than ten years for one-point-two million dollars, or either nine-point-five million dollars for fifty-seven years. And the reason why I say this, it's, you know, when we talk about construction for kids in school, I feel like that's leaving out the people that's getting out of prison, giving them a stable job and all this other stuff, or people that's doing violent things in the streets. So, I'd like to see this to be more extended for several years to all type of people, not just for the, I believe, for the Columbus school education. But again, I would like to see this to be analyzed for everybody here on Columbus, Ohio. Thank you for my time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wilkins, for your advocacy today. Are there any other questions or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, I'm going to turn the floor over momentarily to President Pro Tim Dorans.
Thank you, Council President. Is there a motion for passage of ordinance number one eight nine four dash twenty twenty-four? Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll by voice.
Bangston.
Yes.
Yes.
Barrosa de Padilla.
Yes.
De Akauer.
Yes.
Dorans.
Yes.
Favor.
Stay.
Green.
Yes.
Remi.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
President Harden.
Abstain.
Ordinance is passed, and I will pass it back to Council President.
Thank you, President Pro Tim. May I have a motion for approval of the remainder of the items designated as consent?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla. Bangston.
Yes, with the exception of ordinances eighteen forty-one and eighteen thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four, from which I'm abstaining.
Barrosa de Padilla.
Yes.
De Akauer.
Yes.
Dorans.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes, with the exception of ordinance eighteen thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-four, from which I'm abstaining.
Green.
Yes, with the exception of ordinance eighteen seventy dash twenty twenty-four, which I am abstaining from.
Remi.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes, consent agenda passed with the noted exceptions. We'll now proceed with the second reading of thirty-day postponement emergency legislation. First committee to come before counsel is the Finance and Government chaired by Councilmember Bangston. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. First, up tonight in the Finance and Governance Committee, for second reading, we have ordinance fifteen forty-eight dash twenty twenty-four, to authorize the Finance and Management Director on behalf of the Division of Facility Management to provide funding for the contract with Asset Works LLC for fleet management software services for the city's fleet of vehicles to authorize the expenditure of one million, thirty-six thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty-five cents from the fleet operating fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the Fleet Management Division to renew its contract with Asset Works LLC for enterprise software solutions. The Asset Works Enterprise System provides fleet management with a suite of software solutions to assist with fleet operation. This includes managing, tracking, and implementing preventive maintenance, repairs, and fueling for over six thousand city vehicles and motorized equipment. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remi, White, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, we have ordinance twenty-one twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four, to provide consent to the issuance of tax and lease revenue anticipation refunding bonds by the Franklin County Convention Facility Authority to authorize the negotiation, execution, and delivery of documents of the city relating to the issuance of tax and lease revenue anticipation refunding bonds by the FCCFA and to declare an emergency. This ordinance provides consent by the city to the Franklin County Convention Facility Authority to refund select bonds to achieve interest cost savings. These lower interest costs will result in lower debt service expenses for the Franklin County Convention Facility Authority, which can provide additional fiscal resources for capital, infrastructure improvements, and facility upkeep with respect to the Greater Columbus Convention Center. This ordinance is a companion to the next piece of legislation, ordinance twenty-one twenty-six dash twenty twenty-four. Legislative authority for this bond refunding is necessary due to the lease agreement that currently exists between the Franklin County Convention Facility Authority, Franklin County, and the city of Columbus. And just to put it into the layman's terms, I think we've all seen the recent article about the necessary improvements that are needed at our convention facility. This allows the authority to go out and restructure their debt and issue new bonds to be able to invest in those much necessary repairs. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remi, White, President Harden.
Passed.
And last, we have ordinance twenty-one twenty-six dash twenty twenty-four, to authorize the mayor, city auditor, and/or the department, or, excuse me, or the director of Finance and Management to negotiate, execute, and deliver on behalf of the city the second supplement to the core cooperative agreement dated as of January one, twenty-ten, with the Franklin County Convention Facility Authority and the county of Franklin, Ohio pertaining to the issuance of refunding bonds by the FCCFA and restructuring of reserve funds by the FCCFA to provide consent on behalf of the city to the issuance of refunding bonds by FCCFA and to declare an emergency. This ordinance, again, similar to the one we just passed, twenty-one twenty-five dash twenty twenty-four, provides consent by the city to the Franklin County Convention Facility Authority to refund select bonds to achieve that interest cost savings leading to the same outcomes detailed earlier. This piece of legislation is directly related to the Hilton Downtown Columbus Building. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remi, White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, President Harden. Still, I have my committees this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee to come before counsel is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. I was filed this under the crankiness of the meeting. I did miss one important announcement. This Friday, July twenty-six at two P M., we will be holding a public hearing here in council chambers about Complete Streets. Complete Streets is a transportation policy and design approach that requires streets be planned, designed, operated, and maintained to enable safe, convenient, and comfortable travel and access for users of all ages, abilities regardless of their mode of transportation. We'll be holding this hearing in conjunction with our partners at Morpheus and Public Service. We will be posting on social media how folks can sign up if they want to testify, and we will be taking onsite testimony as well. So, that's at two P M. this Friday. Thank you. I have two ordinances today in public service. The first is eighteen fifty-five, twenty twenty-four, to authorize the transfer of funds between the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Complete General Construction Company for the East Franklinton Pedestrian Improvements Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to seven million, nine hundred seventy-one thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars and ninety-six cents from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund for the project and to declare an emergency. This project will improve State, Broad, and McDowell Streets in the East Franklinton area. Improvements include new pavement, curbs, new traffic signals, storm sewer infrastructure, street trees to keep the neighborhood cool by providing shade, electric facilities, and street lighting. In addition to all previously mentioned improvements, existing railroad bridges along State Street between Lucas and Stradling Streets will have decorative lighting installed as well. Very excited about this project in East Franklinton. It's much needed with all of the construction that's been happening in the area. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Great, seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remi, White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance twenty-sixty-eight, twenty twenty-four, to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Service to enter into contract with A and B Construction, LTD for salt barn repair services, to authorize the expenditure of eighty-seven thousand, four hundred six dollars and zero cents from the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund, to authorize a waiver of the competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus Code and to declare an emergency. The city of Columbus uses salt to keep our roadway safe during snow emergencies. During recent spring storms, some of our city roads' salt storage facilities were damaged and need to be repaired. Uncovered salt storage is against EPA storm water regulations, and the city of Columbus is repairing these salt barns to bring the city back into compliance with the EPA regulations and protect our local waterways. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remi, White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President, for offering me this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before counsel is the Workforce, Education, and Labor Committee chaired by President Pro Tim. President Pro Tim, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. First, we have ordinance one eight five six dash twenty twenty-four, to authorize the Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Education to enter contract with high-quality pre-kindergarten organizations selected via a competitive application process to provide educational services as part of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Early Start Columbus Program and to authorize expenditure of not to exceed six million dollars from the general fund. Children who participate in high-quality pre-kindergarten experiences significantly improve their early literacy, language, and math skills. With Early Start Columbus, we are expanding access through partnerships with Columbus City Schools and Columbus our community-based pre-K providers. State law makes allowable the brading of Ohio Department of Education Early Childhood Expansion Funds with those of the Ohio Department of Johnson Family Services publicly-funded childcare program. The twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Early Start Columbus Program combines the Mayor's Office of Education Funds with these funding streams to further extend the number of children served while using the city's funds more efficiently. This approach uses the city's funds as the last dollar funding, again, to help provide more access for kids in our community to these pre-K services. This is a significant investment into our city's youngest to make sure they have access to high-quality early childhood, which we know can provide significant benefits long-term for their educational outcomes. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remi, White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance two zero four nine dash twenty twenty-four, to approve the proposed collective bargaining agreement in its entirety as executed by the representative of the city Columbus and the I A F F Local Sixty-Seven, dated November first, twenty twenty-three through October thirty-one, twenty twenty-six, to provide for wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment for members in the bargaining units and declare an emergency. This ordinance approves the collective bargain agreement between the city Columbus and our union firefighters, covering the period of November first, twenty twenty-three through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. All articles of this agreement and attachments thereto have been provided by representatives of the city and I A F F Local Sixty-Seven, including the recommendation of the fact-finder, which neither party rejected. A signed agreement will be on file with the Department of Human Resources. Emergency action has been requested in order to allow for immediate implementation of the negotiated clauses, because certain portions of the agreement are effective on a retroactive basis. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remi, White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And finally, I have ordinance two zero seven three dash twenty twenty-four, to authorize the Director of the Mayor's Office of Education to enter in a contract with United Way of Central Ohio for the purposes of acting as a fiscal agent for the program and distribution of funds and program support of after-school providers through authorized expenditure of two million dollars from the general fund and declare an emergency. The city of Columbus is working with the United Way of Central Ohio, Y M C A of Central Ohio, and Columbus City Schools, and the Boys and Girls Club of Central Ohio to develop and implement an after-school program for middle-school youth for the twenty twenty-five school year. Over three hundred Columbus middle-school students will be served at Columbus City Schools, buildings, Boys and Girls Clubs, Y M C A branches, and other community sites beginning in September of twenty twenty-four. Emergency designation is requested, provide startup funds, provide so that organizations may hire staff and purchase materials so they can begin serving children, again, at the beginning of this upcoming school year. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorans, Favor, Green, Remi, White, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, Council President. All I have in my committees at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before counsel is the Health and Human Services and Equity Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Green. Councilmember, the floor is yours. We are moving today.
We sure are. Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, in our Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, I have one ordinance on second reading. It's ordinance number eighteen eighteen dash twenty twenty-four, to authorize the Director of Development to execute grant agreements with numerous not-for-profit social service agencies in an amount of up to four million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand for the Elevate one-point-oh program, to authorize the provision of services for twelve- and eighteen-month periods beginning July first, twenty twenty-four, to authorize the advancement of funds on a predetermined schedule during the term of the agreement, and to authorize the expenditure of up to eight hundred and twenty-five thousand from the Emergency Human Services Fund, and up to three million, eight hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund. The Elevate program invests low-barrier capacity-building funding to really help reinforce our city's human service agencies' ability to fulfill their missions and provide support to our neighbors who need it the most during the time when they need it. This iteration of Elevate funding specifically provides support to organizations who meet at least one of three goals. First, either increasing infant vitality; second, reducing unsheltered homelessness; or third, increasing housing stability for immigrant, migrant, and refugee households. We're talking a lot these days, especially tonight, about Columbus's growth and the growing pains that we're feeling as a result of that growth, which is really the premise behind why we're working so expeditiously to strengthen that critical infrastructure in areas like housing and transit so we can be prepared. We know, though, that as our population continues to grow, so too will the needs of our community, and we are equally planning and preparing for that growth just as judiciously. The funds we're allocating today aren't simply The funds we're allocating today aren't simply a charity or philanthropy. This allocation tonight represents a critical investment in our city's human infrastructure. Funding being allocated through this program has supported our friends and our neighbors who are experiencing hardship that simply need a little bit of support to weather those storms. Organizations like Huckleberry House that ensured adequate staffing 24 hours a day, seven days a week for their crisis center, which in 2023 alone provided over 2,384 nights of crisis shelter to our Columbus youth, as well as counseling services to 224 youth and their families. What's so exciting about the Elevate program here is that it has taken a really unique look at this model of doing traditional human services funding, and I wanted to know Director Stevens, if you wanted to say a little bit about the program, the model, and its impact thus far.
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Green, members of council. Elevate is the city's flagship nonprofit grant program aimed to strengthen the capacity of nonprofits serving Columbus residents. Tonight, legislation represents year three of Elevate 1.0 cohort, so appreciate the support.
We appreciate your support and all you are doing with this amazing program. Do any of my colleagues have comments or questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorns favor, Green, Remi Weich. President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. That's all for me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Criminal Justice Committee, chaired by Councilmember Remi. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Tonight, I have one ordinance in Public Safety and Criminal Justice. It's 2055-2024 to authorize a city attorney to enter into a settlement agreement with Jay Chun Liu in the case of City of Columbus versus Jay Chun Liu. Delaware County Court of Common Pleas, case number 23CVCO80550, and to accept deposit of $25,000 into the Division of Water Land Stewardship Fund. I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor over to Deputy Chief of Staff Brian Shen of the City Attorney's Office to briefly describe the case.
Thank you, Chair Remi, President Council, or excuse me, President Harden, members of council. As Councilmember Remi said, in July 2021, staff from the Division of Public Utilities, Division of Water discovered that the property owner had removed trees and vegetation from city-owned property adjacent to his property along the Hoover Reservoir. Mr. Liu acknowledged that the trees and vegetation were removed at his direction. Although he replaced some of them, he did not replace all of the trees and vegetation. Therefore, the city attorney filed suit in August 2023. The parties reached a settlement, and the amount is based on the cost of the trees removed but not replaced by Mr. Liu on a per-inch basis at $100 per inch. City attorney recommends that council approve this settlement and the payment of $25,000 from Mr. Liu to the city, as it is in the best interest of the city to resolve this matter by settlement. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shen. Is there, are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Weich.
Just a quick comment. We care about our trees in Columbus, so we're always going to ensure that people are doing the right thing, especially around our reservoirs, so just wanted to make sure we highlighted that point.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorns favor, Green, Remi Weich. President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you very much. That is all I have in the committee this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Sustainability Committee, chaired by Councilmember Weich. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. And friends, last week, I said on that one ordinance night to remember that. Today, I'm calling due because we have 11 ordinances in Public Utilities and Sustainability tonight, but we'll try to get through them as quickly as possible. First, I have 0151-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to modify and increase a professional engineering services contract with MS Consultants Incorporated for the Sutherland Stormwater Floodplain Improvement Project to appropriate funds in the Sanitary Freshwater Market Rate Fund, to make this ordinance contingent upon the Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan for this project and to authorize an expenditure of $3,974,725.81 from the Sanitary Freshwater Market Rate Fund to pay for the contract modification. The city's wastewater treatment plants require continual development and upgrades in order to keep processes and equipment up to date and compliant and running well. This project will provide a phased development stormwater and floodplain master plan for the Sutherland wastewater treatment plant that is in compliance with the City of Columbus's stormwater and drainage manual, Ohio Environmental Protection Agency's stormwater general permit, and Federal Emergency Management Agency requirements. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorns favor, Green, Remi Weich. President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have 1750-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a professional engineering services contract with Hatch Associates Consultants Incorporated for the Compost Order Control Improvements Part II Project to appropriate funds in the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund, to make this ordinance contingent upon the Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan for this project and to authorize an expenditure of $1,800,000 from the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund. This contract is for Step Two Detailed Design Services. This phase of the contract will include complete detailed designs of various site improvements such as paving, electrical instrumentation upgrades and modifications, site stormwater improvements, process expansion, bulk storage, lay-down expansion, required facility demo, security upgrades, and regulatory permitting and compliance. Detailed design will also include project management, design submittals, regulatory reviews, and construction bidding documents and bidding services. Let me pause there and see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorns favor, Green, Remi Weich. President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have 1780-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a contract modification for professional engineering services with Arcatis U.S. Incorporated for the Hapcremene Water Plant Hypochlorite Disinfection Improvement Project to appropriate funds in the Water Freshwater Market Rate Fund, to make this ordinance contingent upon the Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan for this project and to authorize an expenditure of $2,999,688 from the Water Freshwater Market Rate Fund to pay for the contract modification. This contract provides for design of improvements to the disinfection, storage, and feed facilities at the Hapcremene Water Plant. The plant currently utilizes a chlorine gas-based process, and this project will convert the plant to a liquid sodium hypochlorite-based process. Retrofitting existing facilities for storage and feed of an alternate disinfectant will provide for safer storage and handling. This modification provides for engineering services during construction. This is the final planned contract modification. Let me pause there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorns favor, Green, Remi Weich. President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have 1847-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a professional engineering services contract with CDM Smith, Inc. for the Water Reuse Study Project to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation between projects within the Water Bond Fund and to authorize an expenditure of $1,959,242 from the Water Bond Fund. Within the next 25 years, the population of Central Ohio areas projected to grow by more than 700,000 people, increasing demand on the city of Columbus's water supply system. In order to meet these increased water demands, the Department of Public Utilities is evaluating the non-drinkable water reuse to supply water to existing and future industrial and commercial users, which in turn will reduce the demand on drinkable water supply system. Examples of industrial commercial users include data centers, industrial cooling, irrigation, and manufacturing. As you know, we have a lot of data centers relocating to Central Ohio areas. Important that we find ways to kind of ensure that we continue to have clean drinking water for our residents while also providing the water necessary for them to operate their facilities. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorns favor, Green, Remi Weich. President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have 1849-2024 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify the power purchase agreements with DG Columbus Jackson Pike LLC and DG Columbus Solar LLC to provide funding for the purchase of energy and environmental attributes generated at the photovoltaic solar energy facilities at the Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant and the Parsons Avenue Water Plant and to authorize an expenditure of $1,500,000 from the electricity operating fund. The solar photovoltaic facilities have approximately 27 megawatt capacity and 18 megawatt capacity aggregate nameplate capacity at the Parsons Avenue and Jackson Pike sites respectively. The total amount of additional funds needed for this contract modification is $1.5 million and will cover payments through March of 2025. The initial contract was accepted with the expectation that amounts would be developed after contract negotiations that included the price per megawatt hour. The modification is based upon estimated requirements to purchase the solar energy less estimated savings at a contract price per megawatt hour negotiated between Xnet Next Era and the Department of Public Utilities. Let me pause there and see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorns favor, Green, Remi Weich. President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have 1902-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to modify and increase a professional engineering services contract with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated for the Big Walnut Trunk Extension Phase II Project to appropriate funds in the Sanitary Freshwater Market Rate Fund, to make this ordinance contingent upon the Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan for this project and to authorize an expenditure of $1,197,843.45 from the Sanitary Freshwater Market Rate Funds paid for the contract modification. This project will construct the final extension of the Big Walnut Sanitary Trunk Sewer north of Central College Road and east of Hoover Reservoir. It will provide sanitary sewer service for the rapidly developing area between Hoover Reservoir and New Albany north of State Route 161. This modification will add funding to provide engineering services during the construction for the next phase. Let me pause there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorns favor, Green, Remi Weich. President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have 1905-2024 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify and increase a professional construction management services contract with Smooth Construction Company of Ohio for the Big Walnut Trunk Extension Phase II Professional Construction Management Project to appropriate the funds in the Sanitary Freshwater Market Rate Fund, to make this ordinance contingent upon the Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan for this project and to authorize an expenditure of $4,729,581.18 from the Sanitary Freshwater Market Rate Fund to pay for the contract modification. This contract provides professional construction administration and management services that include full-time construction inspection, project coordination, reporting, budgeting, and scheduling, and other related tasks, ensuring that the Big Walnut Trunk Project Phase II objectives are successfully implemented. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorns favor, Green, Remi Weich. President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have 1911-2024 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a contract modification for professional engineering services with Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc. for the Parsons Avenue Water Plant Treatment Residuals Disposal Improvement Project to appropriate funds in the Water Freshwater Market Rate Fund, to make this ordinance contingent upon the Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan for this project and to authorize an expenditure of up to $4,775,000 from the Water Freshwater Market Rate Fund to pay for the contract modification. This modification will fund detailed design services that will include the installation of a new Parsons Avenue Water Plant residual pump station, a new dual residual force mains to the Lockborn Road Quarry Site, modifications to the Parsons Avenue Water Plant Lagoon decamp pump station and towers, a residuals conveyance system, a geotechnical work to provide equalization to quarry cells, flood protection measures, and a new Lockborn Road Quarry decamp pump station, force main, and outfall to Big Walnut Creek. The detailed design will include improvements needed to convey treatment residuals from the Parsons Avenue Water Plant to the adjacent Lockborn Road Quarry and to convert the quarry property to receive water treatment residuals. A future contract renewal request is anticipated for engineering services during construction. Let me pause there, see if you have any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorns favor, Green, Remi Weich. President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have 1946-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to renew and increase the contract with J. and D. Home Improvement LLC, doing business as the Basement Doctor for the Blueprint Volunteer Sump Pump 2022 Project to transfer cash and appropriation between projects within the Sanitary Bond Fund and to authorize an expenditure of $1 million from the Sanitary Bond Fund to pay for the contract renewal. This pillar of the blueprint project aims to reduce inflow and infiltration to the city sanitary sewer system, thus mitigating sanitary sewer overflows to basements and waterways identified, I'm sorry, waterways in identified neighborhoods. This aspect of the program will allow residents to volunteer for installation of sump pumps in their homes to reduce excess stormwater entering the city sanitary sewer system. The sump pumps redirect foundation drain away from the sanitary lateral to the sump pit. This contract covers properties throughout the City of Columbus Blue Plant Areas, including but not limited to Clintonville, Hilltop, Miller Kelton, Linden, James Livingston, and Old Beechwood. Let me pause there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Pass. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorns favor, Green, Remi Weich. President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, I have 1948-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a professional services contract modification with MS Consultants Incorporated to add funding for the Fourth Water Plant Transmission Main Project, to make this ordinance contingent upon the Ohio Water Development Authority approving a loan for this project and to authorize an appropriation and expenditure of up to $18,739,252.2 from the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund to pay for the contract modification. This contract is for engineering consulting services for the design of water transmission mains that will be on Home Road. The transmission mains will extend from the Home Road Water Plant located at 5992 Home Road in Delaware County to strategic connection points in the city's existing water distribution system, specifically the Cleveland Henderson Pressure District. One transmission main is to be constructed by December 31st of 2028, with the completion of the second main by December 31st of 2030. This modification is needed for the consultants to finish detailed designs, and we expect one additional planned contract modification. We also expect another planned contract modification for Phase III engineering services during construction. Let me pause there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorns favor, Green, Remi Weich. President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Lastly, I have 2106-2024 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish purchase orders and associate purchase agreements with multiple vendors for the purchase of refuse collection containers and parts, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,159,43 from the refuse bond fund for the purchase of these containers and parts and to declare an emergency. The Department of Public Service Division of Refuse Collection utilizes 300-gallon, 96-gallon, and 64-gallon refuse containers and other types as needed for residential trash collection. The Division also maintains replacement parts for containers that are not covered by warranties. The purchase of these containers and parts constitutes a portion of container replacement program and is budgeted expense within Division of Refuse Collections' capital improvement budget. Emergency action was requested to prevent uninterrupted supply of containers and parts to ensure the continued delivery of refuse collection services to all residents. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akhauer, Dorns favor, Green, Remi Weich. President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That is all I have for my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Final committee to come before-
Final committee to come before council is the Rules Committee. I chair that committee. The council member favor has, I'm going to turn the floor over to her.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in Rules and Policy, we have ordinance nineteen fifty-six dash twenty twenty-four to amend various sections and enact new sections of Title Forty-One, the Columbus Building Code, to establish termination and abandonment provisions for existing plumbing fixtures or opportunances and provide definitions of new terms. At this time, I would like to move to postpone until July twenty-ninth.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorance Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Postponed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. See no further business to come before council. Is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Akauer, Dorance Favor, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We have two non-agenda speakers.
Number forty-two will now come to order. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Can I get a motion dismissed with the reading of the Journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the Journal? Hearing none. The Journal is approved. We'll now go to the zoning committee. President Pro Tim Dorans chairs that committee. All members serve on it. Press pro temp, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. As always, allow me to briefly explain our current rules pertaining to speaking for council on rezonings and variances. We only hear a staff presentation if they have ordinances that have a disapproval from recommending body, or if we have a public speaker signed up to speak against an ordinance. We permit three speakers on each side of an ordinance, three proponents, three opponents. We ask that those speakers limit their remarks to three minutes per the standard rules of city council. Only those who own property within one hundred and twenty-five feet of an address that is subject of a variance request are legally able to make public comments on a council variance pursuant to advice in the city attorney's office. All speakers on council variances, including city staff, area commissioners, applicants, and members of the public, will be sworn in before they give testimony. Representative and area commission are always able to speak in an ordinance, do not need to fill out speaker slip, but we do ask that any area commissioners do alert city staff of their intention to speak at this committee hearing. We did not receive any public speaker slips tonight, but we do have two area commissioners here with us on one piece of legislation. On the advice of the city attorney's office, all will now swear in city staff, please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. Do you swear affirm the testimony you have to give shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, that you shall answer in pains of penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Please let the record show that Tim Dietrich from the Department of Billion Zoning Services has been sworn in. First, we have ordinance two zero seven nine dash twenty twenty-four to rezone one eight three four Sullivan Avenue, being four point zero three plus acres on northwest side of Sullivan Avenue to Townsend Avenue from AR one Apartment Residential District and R Rural District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The site consists of one undeveloped parcel, and requested rezoning will allow development of a police substation. The proposal is approved as city staff, Development Commission, and the Greater Hilltop LA Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance two zero eight eight dash twenty twenty-four to rezone three seven five five Ridge Mill Road, being five point two zero plus acres located on southwest side of Ridge Mill Drive, six hundred plus feet of Fisherner Boulevard from CPD Commercial Plan Development District, ARO Apartment Office District. Site consists of one parcel developed with commercial uses, and the proposed rezoning will allow multi-unit residential development on the site, consistent with ordinance number zero five five two dash twenty twenty-three passed March sixth, twenty twenty-three, which allows up to two hundred and thirty-five units with a commercial component. Concurrent council variance is further down on tonight's agenda. Proposal is approved from city staff, Development Commission, and the West Side of the Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Moving into the variance portion of our agenda, first we have ordinance two zero five four dash twenty twenty-four to granted variance provisions of section three three five six point oh three, C four permitted uses, three three one two point two seven, parking setback line, three three one two point four nine required parking, three three five six point one one, C four district setback lines, Columbus City Codes for property located at seven three seven dash seven three nine South Terrace Avenue to allow a apartment building with reduced development standards in the C four commercial district. Site consists of one parcel developed with a five-unit apartment building, and the proposal includes the addition of three units to the existing building with variances for ground floor residential use, and reduced building and parking setback lines and reduced parking from twelve to five spaces. A variance is necessary because the current district does not allow ground floor residential uses. The proposal is approved of city staff and the Greater Hilltop Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. Our next move to adopt the fines of staff is the fines of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, green, favor Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance two zero seven six dash twenty two hundred and twenty-four to granted variance provisions of section three 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 two point zero three seven R two residential district, three 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 two point two five maximum side yard required, three 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 two point two six maximum side yard permitted, and three 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 two point two seven rear yard, the colon of the, I'm sorry, rear, and three 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 two point four one rooftop telecommunications installation for the Columbus City Codes for property located at two zero four dash two one zero West Weber Road to allow a natural gas regulation station with reduced development standards in the R two F residential district. This site consists of one parcel developed with a multi-unit residential development, and the requested council variance will allow Columbia Gas constructing a natural gas regulation station. A council variance is required because the current district does not allow commercial uses. Proposal has approvals from city staff and the Clintonville Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. Our next move to amend to emergency.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Amended.
And finally, move for passage as amended.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance two zero eight one dash twenty twenty-four to granted variance provisions of section three 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 two point zero three three R two residential district, three three one two point one three A driveway, three three one two point two five maneuvering, three three one two point four nine required parking, and three 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 two point zero five A four area district lot with requirements, and three 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 two point one two R two area district requirements of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at one seven two six East Twenty-third Avenue to allow two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R two residential district for two adjacent lots. Site consists of two undeveloped parcels, and the requested council variance will allow the development of a two-unit dwelling on each lot. A council variance is required because the current district does not permit two-unit dwellings. The proposal has approvals from city staff and the North Central Area Commission. We do have two members of the North Central Area Commission here with us this evening to speak on this ordinance. If I want to invite them to come forward, I believe we have Commissioner White and Commissioner Welcome back to council. So we'll need to swear you both in when you get to the podium.
Hello.
Hello. Raise your right hand and be sworn in. Do you swear affirm the testimony you both are about to give shall be the truth, nothing but the truth, that you shall answer in pains of penalty of perjury? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. The floor is yours, Commissioner Williams, and then we'll have Commissioner White.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm here on behalf of the Civic Association. I received communication post vote, so I just want to have it on the record what we received from Argyle Park Civic Association. Regarding this particular zoning for the property on Twenty-third, the variance was CV two four dash zero two five. And again, this is from Ms. Gloria Anderson, which is the president of that civic. To build the two family dwelling duplex on each lot for the rental is affordable housing and requesting for variance to do so. The property is across from Palascolite, and they're concerned that the project is being financed by the Affordable Housing Trust without the community approval, excuse me, the community approval. The vote that they had for the project from the civic was no, six no, and they were concerned about the two units being on the small lot with them not having good green space for tenants to enjoy the back of the units. Also, there was a no vote, six zero, on the lots will not fit onto the small lot from the civic. Let's see. And it's due to the spacing. Also, another one of the concerns was the parking, and I know with zoning, they're reducing the parking, however, but for the units allowed it for it to only have one if most people have vehicles, so that was also a major concern for them. But one of the biggest concerns for them also was the disruption of potential business for Palascolite far as the entryway on Twenty-third for those neighbors and that that business. They don't want to make sure that it doesn't disrupt that business and what it does because they've been a good community partner. But one of the biggest things was the green space as well. And there was also a no vote, six zero and no, because of the traffic proposal for the city that the shared driveway between the two houses would not work because there's not any parking on the street. Again, we know with zoning, they're reducing the parking, but they feel that that's going to be a major concern. So I just wanted to have it on the record, you know, this is the communication that we received back from the community post the vote. So again, I just want to take that into consideration with the neighbors, that it will be impacted the most in what their concerns are. And for me, we're here to represent the community, you know, if they give us, give communication to me, I want to make sure that we, you know, get it to you guys. And the biggest, again, concern was the parking, and while they're trying to develop this project, how's it going to affect Palascolite's business, but as well as once the structure, if it gets, goes forward, the green space for the families as well as the parking. So I just wanted to bring that to you guys from the Civic Association.
Yep. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner White, do you have anything?
Just a couple of comments. So, good evening, Council President Harden, Council Pro Tim Dorans, council members. I actually wasn't there for the vote. I was out of commission, and so to speak. I was out of commission. Mrs. Nacore, we talked, she came to our zoning meeting. Some of the comments that came back from staff, I think, are very reminiscent to what zoning is going to be in the major corridors and not so much in the neighborhoods. So the one driveway we had discussion about, my bigger concern is there is an improved alley behind there, which would allow her to have some green space if this project would go through, but that would obviously require dollars to improve that. But there are houses on Twenty-fourth. There is an owner that has some properties next door to her, and she's looking to potentially build further down on that street. So we're hindering potentially folks being able to use that alley for access, and then there wouldn't be a big issue with parking so much. So if this does move forward, I would like to see some movement with that. It's not fair to ask a developer building two units on two parcels to develop an entire alley. You know what I mean? So she wouldn't have, they wouldn't have access to anything if they just improved their piece of it. So I would ask that you would consider potentially looking into improving that because there's going to be future development, there's properties being sold there, and that would take away the parking issue and concern for Palascolite. Maybe not for the community because they obviously don't want it, but affordable housing is affordable housing, and we need it. So if you guys could just consider that, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Oh, Councilwoman Barrosa de Padilla.
Hi, Commissioner White. Glad to see you're back in commission. We could get that information to Kevin McCain, and then we'll follow up just to understand what that alley is and where it is, and then we can follow up with the Department of Public Service because that would be technically their area. So we've done in the past, this is no promises, but I know in the past we've done some chipping and some other things in the alley that make it more usable. So once we know the exact address, and thank you for the site map, but we'll follow up and then we'll get back to the commission.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you both. And I appreciate you both bringing the information from the civic, even though it sounds like that got to you a little bit later and, you know, that kind of process, but, I mean, this is exactly what our area commissions do, is highlight issues as they come through, even as projects potentially get approved here about what we need to do to make sure the city infrastructure exists to support it, because you all call that area town home every single day. So thank you for doing that.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, since this does have full approvals from all the recommending bodies, again, I appreciate the commissioners here tonight to highlight an issue for us to follow up on, but if there's no other question or comments, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. Our next move to adopt the fines of staff is the fines of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance two zero eight seven dash twenty twenty-four to granted variance provisions of section three three five six point oh three, C four permitted uses, three three seven two point six oh four setbacks requirements, three three seven two point six zero five ABD building design standards, and three three seven two point oh six seven B landscaping and screening, the Columbus City Codes for property located at two five five two dash two five five eight Cleveland Avenue to allow a natural gas regulation station with reduced development standards in the C four commercial district. Similar to a earlier variance on our agenda, the site consists of two undeveloped parcels, and the requested council variance will allow Columbia Gas to build a natural gas regulation station at this location, which is not allowed in the current zoning district. Proposal has approvals from city staff and the North London Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. Our next move to adopt the fines of staff is the fines of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Next, we move to amend as submitted clerk.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Amended.
Move to amend to emergency.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Amended.
And finally, move for passage as amended.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance two zero eight nine dash twenty twenty-four to granted variance provisions of section three 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 point oh four permitted use to the ARO Apartment Office District, three three one two point two five maneuvering, three three two one point oh one A dumpster area, and three 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 point two five five permitted yard, the Columbus City Codes for property located at three seven five five Ridge Mill Drive to allow commercial vehicular access, dumpsters, and loading, and reduced development standards for an apartment complex in the ARO Apartment Office District. The applicant has received a recommendation from the, from staff and the Development Commission for concurrent rezoning. We heard earlier in tonight's agenda, the proposal includes an apartment complex of a total of one hundred and twenty units. Again, it has been approved by city staff and the West Side of the Area Commission. I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, move to adopt the fines of staff is the fines of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And finally, we have ordinance one six five nine dash twenty twenty-four to granted variance provisions of section three 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 two point zero three five, R three residential district, three 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 two point zero five A four area district lot with requirements, three 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 two point one three, R three area district requirements, and three 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 two point two one building lines, Columbus City Codes for property located at one two eight six Key West Avenue to allow two units dwelling with reduced development standards in the R three residential district. This ordinance was postponed at our last zoning committee meeting in order to give more time for the applicant to meet with community members about an unrelated issue. Unfortunately, due to scheduling conflicts, that meeting was not able to happen, but in working with stakeholders, we were able to determine that it's okay to postpone this ordinance until after legislative break in order to allow those meetings to occur. Therefore, I move to postpone this ordinance to a council meeting on September ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.
Postponed.
Thank you, Council Presidents, all we have in tonight's zoning agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Seeing no further business coming for the zoning committee, is there most to adjourn? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston Barrosa de Padilla de O'Haworth Dorans, favor Green, Remy Weiss, President Harden.